...day, June 23rd, 2021, Board of County Commission meeting. I'm Akeem Ashford, the Director of Communications. Since 1910, the Kansas Society of Professional Engineers has provided the resources to engineers to better inform and connect one another in the profession. We'd like to congratulate Chairman Pete Meitzner, who was selected as a 2021 recipient of the Kansas Society of Professional Engineers Citizen of the Year Award. Chairman Meitzner will accept this award during the Thursday, June 24th luncheon awards banquet in Manhattan, Kansas at their state conference. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. I think it was a combined effort of all of us, so I just get to, I just get to receive the award, so thank you.
You're welcome, Chairman. Commissioners, this is our last meeting before we celebrate the Fourth of July holiday, so to give citizens the proper tips and information to be safe during the holiday, we would like to play a fireworks video, safety video, and then welcome Chief Doug Williams to the podium afterwards.
Did you know that fireworks start an average of 18,500 fires per year, including structures and vehicle fires? These fires caused an average of three deaths, several civilian injuries, and an average of $43 million in direct property damage. To keep you and your family safe this Fourth of July, here are some safety tips.
Have a water supply close by when discharging fireworks.
Only discharge fireworks that are approved in the state of Kansas. Know the regulations for your city or town.
Never throw fireworks at animals or people.
Always supervise children while using fireworks and allow them to cool before disposing them in a metal container.
Only use fireworks outdoors and away from buildings.
Never attempt to relight a misfire or a dud.
Be responsible when consuming alcohol while discharging fireworks.
Be sure to secure your pets when discharging fireworks.
Never discharge fireworks in or around wheat fields and pastures.
If you have complaints pertaining to parties, excessive noise, or fireworks, please report it to Cedric County Emergency Communications Non-Emergency Line at 316-290-1011. From our family to yours, we hope you have a safe and enjoyable Fourth of July.
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Commissioners, Doug Williams, Fire Chief. They just gave my presentation of my notes here, so a couple of the things that we want to stress to the folks is about the "shoot 'em where you buy 'em" concept. One of the things we have put on our Facebook page and on our fire department webpage this year was that all the regulations for every community, every town, and in unincorporated Sedgwick County, because every town adopts their own fireworks policies, whether Hayesville, Goddard, Mays, Wichita, they all have their own policies and they all have their own shooting times, not only what times you can shoot during the day, but also what days are allowed for shooting. So, since they're all different and we get questions constantly, we've posted all of the information for every town in the county into the webpage, and that'll answer a lot of those questions. One of the things they didn't touch about in the video, we've seen a lot of problems with, are the sparklers. And people don't understand, but wood burns at 575 degrees, but a sparkler, the handheld sparklers burn at 1,200 to 1,300 as they start, and as they get hotter, they'll burn up to 3,000 degrees temperature, so they are very, very dangerous. And once again, the storage and we, most of the fires we run are from the spent fireworks that somebody throws in a dumpster, or they leave in a box on their deck. And so we really want to emphasize the safe disposal of fireworks when you're finished. And outside of that, if you have any questions?
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Chief, for being here, and appreciate the reminder. I love this time of year, get to celebrate freedom, and of course, we don't want anybody to get hurt or see any property damage, but one of the things we always hear, people saying, you just said it this morning, is "shoot 'em where you buy 'em." I would like to know, is there any place in the county outside of the city to buy fireworks? I don't think there is. And so if people are actually in the unincorporated outside of the city, are they allowed to shoot off fireworks so they can't buy them outside of the city? So what's, how do you balance those two ideas out?
In the county, they did, and I believe, if I'd have to look at this, I believe we allow it from the first through the fifth for the shooting and display of fireworks. So yes, you can buy them and shoot them in the county, but there are certain things that are illegal, like the, some of the rockets and some of the different things that are illegal. But once again, that's put in our webpage so that we can explain that. But you're correct, there is no fireworks sales tents in the county that I'm aware of right now.
So they can buy them in the city, take them to the county and shoot them off, but the regulations maybe, you said they're posted on the website, so they need to be careful to know what they can do there, okay?
Yeah, and same with Wichita. If you go to Hayesville and buy something that's legal in Hayesville, you shouldn't take it back into the city of Wichita, because once again, it may be illegal within the city limits of Wichita.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, thanks, Chief. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Just to answer your question, Commissioner, this is that website that I was going to bring up, the 2021 firework discharge and sale dates and times. People can go to cedriccounty.org/fire/fireworks to see that list that the chief was talking about of the 2021 firework discharge and sale dates and times. So there's that website again, and it's got all that information. Okay, moving on, I would like to also welcome Deputy Director of Emergency Communications, Elena Moreno, to the podium to speak about the Cedric County Non-Emergency Line during the holiday season.
Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Elena Moreno, your Deputy Director of Emergency Communications, and wanted to come and speak with you as we're gearing up for the Fourth of July. We're going to open up our non-emergency line starting next week to help field some of those nuisance phone calls and get them off of our emergency 911 lines. The goal of our non-emergency line is to make sure that we have a clear path for those people in our community that may be in imminent danger and need immediate help. And so we're taking those phone calls of party complaints, fireworks complaints, loud noise complaints, anything like that, that we can handle in a different matter or a different way. And so those calls will still be taken by your dispatchers, they'll just be handled in a less emergent way. And so, as you can see here, we'll be opening our non-emergency line next week, starting on the first through the fifth. It will be open from 6:00 PM to 3:00 AM each day, and 290-1000. It looks like we also have this in Spanish, and so communications will push that out as well, so that we can touch more members of our community with that. And so I really just want to let you guys know how thankful I am for our staff and the dedication that they put into going into this time of year. It is our busiest time of year, and we kind of just have to sit down and hold on and wait for it to be over, so.
Okay, thank you. It's a crazy time of year, every year.
Every year. We're ready for it, though.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Elena, if you don't mind, I was delighted to see you on Monday when I went and sat with 911. It really is busy over there, so I can't imagine adding this on top of it. I mean, it was literally like multitasking on steroids over there. So it's a really important service, and I'm glad that, how are we pushing this out? Have we talked to, like, do we talk to our media partners as well?
Yeah, so we'll be pushing it out through social media, through the website. We've also talked to our partners with police, fire, and EMS, and all the different communities that we service, and so they will also be helping push it out through their social media channels as well.
Great, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for coming over.
Sure.
All right, moving on. The American Red Cross is facing a severe blood shortage as the number of trauma cases, organ transplants, and elective surgeries rise. These important procedures are depleting the nation's blood inventory. Donors of all blood types, especially type O, and those giving platelets, are urged to make an appointment to give as soon as possible to prevent further impact to patients. Those who donate through June 30th will receive a $5 Amazon gift card through the American Red Cross. For information on a blood drive near you, please go to redcrossblood.org or by calling 1-800-RED-CROSS. Commissioners, taking a look at today's agenda, under new business, there's a presentation of the COVID-19 vaccination survey results by Dr. Elizabeth Abloh with KU School of Medicine, a presentation by Mark Bennett, District Attorney, on the District Attorney Salary Study Results. Julie Stimson will present on a resolution to adopt the Kansas Homeland Security Region G Hazard Mitigation Plan, and a report of the bids and contracts meeting on June 17th. On, under consent, a consideration of a donation for comm care for suicide prevention, a renewal grant award for KDHE, and an agreement with the Kansas Children's Service League to provide outreach, prevention, and intervention services through the Healthy Babies Program at the Cedric County Health Department. There's a transfer of budget authority from the Risk Contingency to the Risk Management Cost Center within the Risk Management Fund. Item H is a dedication of access controls in Commission District Number Four. And then there's an agreement for construction engineering services by Cedric County, by Cedric County for the City of Derby. And with that, Chairman, I'll turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Akeem, and good morning, everybody. It's nice to see people here again. It's, we're getting back to nearly normal. We've got a, Mike Papoun is out this week, so we're joined by Patricia Parker as our legal authority here. So with that, I will call the meeting to order Wednesday, June 23rd, of the Board of Cedric County Commissioners. Madam Clerk?
Incase, to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez?
President.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Commissioners, I understand that we did not receive any comments by email, and we did not have anybody sign up to address us in the public agenda, but Mr. Public Agenda himself, Lonnie the Plumber, has joined us. Just recognize you, celebrities in the House, so with that, so we'll move on. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business. Item A, Presentation of COVID-19 Vaccination Survey Results.
Dr. Abloh, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Really nice to be here with you this morning, thank you. So I'm Elizabeth Abloh. I am a professor at the University of Kansas School of Medicine Wichita in the Department of Population Health, and we were contracted by Cedric County Health Department to conduct a couple of surveys. I have presented the first survey results to you, and hot off the press, able to present to you this morning the second round. Just a reminder of what this was, we had a seven-county assessment. We wanted to hear from the seven counties where they were in terms of COVID vaccines, their COVID, the behaviors around COVID. We are going to present this morning specifically the results of Sedgwick County. I'll give you one quick glimpse of the whole survey, but you'll see a result of the seven counties, but you will see the three objectives, to identify the characteristics of those who are not vaccinated, to determine what might motivate them to get the vaccine, and then also to explore where they might consider taking their kids to get vaccinated, because this second administration, that those set of questions were new. We did not have the vaccine available to anyone younger than an adult, or 16. So we have in here, 16 was the survey threshold, I should say. So the first administration of the survey was the 16th of November through the 16th of December, and I've presented those results to you today. I'm going to present what was basically the May assessment. We did have the survey available in English, Spanish, and in Vietnamese. So just to give you a perspective, this was a much smaller sample size. We had about 2,600 respondents for Sedgwick County. We had a little bit more than 3,300 for all seven counties. This is much smaller than what our previous iteration was, and you'll see only 0.5% of the Cedric County population. So take a lot of this with a grain of salt, but also, and there are some useful findings here, so I'm still very pleased to be able to present this to you. So we definitely have a larger proportion of our respondents' report being female. You can see the age distribution, more of our people were 50 years or older, and most reported being non-Hispanic and white. So again, take this with a grain of salt. We definitely have some non-representation from survey respondents. So 73% reported being a college graduate, that on its own is disproportionate. Also, 90% reported that their annual income was more than $22,000. And you can see the top professions that were listed here. So this is the brief snapshot of all seven counties. What I'd like to draw your attention to is the blue line. The lines that are blue are, I have been vaccinated. You can see in Marion, Sedgwick, Butler, and Harvey, we're all around the 80% indicated that of these respondents, they had been vaccinated. When it comes to Sumner, Reno, and Cowley, more around 60%. I'd also like to draw your attention to the yellow, I will not get vaccinated, especially when you look at the Reno County, that is the highest proportion. Again, we're dealing with a really small sample size with this, though, so that's 21 people. So again, take it with a grain of salt, but it just sort of gives you an idea of where respondents are. So for the rest of this presentation, we're going to focus on Cedric County. So of the 26 14 Cedric County residents who did access the survey, 80% had received the vaccine. What I'd like to draw your attention to here is that there were 6% who said they still plan to get the vaccine or may get the vaccine, and 14 who said they plan to not. So of those who said they plan to get the vaccine, you can see their timeline. Again, this is a small sample, 160 folks, but you can see that is still, there is still a plan. So there is, I think, probably a thought that I'm going to do it, I just, I'm not, I haven't done it yet, I just haven't gotten there. So we do ask later here in the survey that I'll present to you the results, why? What's slowing you down, what's concerning to you, what are barriers? So this, folks who said that they did have children, 16 years or, excuse me, younger than 16 years, 66% said they would definitely or probably vaccinate them. So just a reminder, we have folks only 18 years or older complete the survey, so we did not ask children if they were wanting to be vaccinated, but 66 say that they definitely or probably would. We asked them also, where would you want your child to be vaccinated? So you can see, largest proportion by far, the doctor's office. So, but also the school building, which I think is interesting. There's some interesting models across the country of people being able to drop their kids off at either school or daycare, and also get a vaccine, get a test, that sort of thing. So especially with the round circles, that can be a really nice way, the circle drives, that can be a nice, efficient way of getting tests or COVID vaccines done. So, okay, we asked them about the concerns for the vaccine. I'd like you to see, and the green bar is a moderate or extreme concern. And so you can see the long-term side effects of the vaccine is the strongest, and qualitative data bear that out as well. The vaccine will not be safe, and that it won't be effective. Those are really consistent with the first-round survey as well. But, and I'll talk about the proportions here in a moment, but I think what's really interesting about this is that the, these are very pliable concepts, because we know very clearly that long-term side effects really are very limited to, at the most, six weeks after vaccine. And really, usually, it's more along the lines of like a 36-hour window. So this is something that's really, we have some ammunition here. We're able to share with people information that this is not needing to be a concern, that we have lots of data that we can share and be able to provide that information. And similarly, you can see the vaccine will not be safe. We have lots of data to demonstrate that it is extremely safe. On the other end of things, I'd like you to look at the yellow line, that is no or slight concern. And you can see lack of time, lack of access to a healthcare provider, personal, religious, moral, or ethical decisions. That is, those are really high. So in some ways, this is, this is very hopeful for me, because these are things, it seems like we have access, there seems to be access, or at least even a perception of access. The lack of time is an interesting one, because we'll talk about this here in a moment, but we have seen that when you pair a, an offering of a vaccine with a, an opportunity that is where I'm going already, like for instance, I'm going to the gym, and you know what, I can get a vaccine and I'm right there, or even for that matter, a test. At the same time, it is a very efficient use of my time, I don't have to go elsewhere. So pairing opportunities where people are already going with opportunities to vaccine, to give vaccines, it's fantastic. So briefly, the qualitative data that are, what were your concerns? So we asked them the quantitative, which is what generated this, but then also some qualitative data, asking them what are their concerns, why are you not wanting to be vaccinated? You can see very consistently the same type of information here. I do want to point out that COVID-19 is quote "not that bad." We are seeing an interesting trend, and this is not specific to Cedric County, we've seen this across the country. My immune system is really tough. I can fight this myself. I do homeopathic, you know, I'm very, I live healthfully, I live, eat clean, I exercise and all of this, and there's a perception that my body can fight it. And that really is a misnomer, and we're really needing folks to understand that this is not just a, a passing cold or flu, that this really is much more severe in many cases, and we can't always predict when it's going to be severe for someone. So we also asked them, what might motivate you to get a COVID vaccine? And this is where that, that time that I was talking about, that they said really is not an issue, it's not a concern, but I'd also like to, you know, pair that with these responses. So 41% said, yeah, if I don't have to do an appointment, if I can just walk in. So that's an interesting fact, right? So 41% also said, if it was available at my workplace. So again, pairing this with the opportunity, I'm already there, can I just get it done there? And then also 38% knowing where to go. Now this is again, something very hopeful for us, that we're able to think, okay, so maybe you don't know where to go to get a vaccine. We can make that information very available very quickly. We asked who are trusted sources, so that we can make sure that we are having folks who they do trust, share information that is accurate. And you can see very consistently, and again, consistently from the last administration of this survey, the doctors and medical providers are on the top, researchers, pharmacies, and local health departments following thereafter. So this is the same information, just seeing here on green, the strongly agree or agree, I do trust this person, this source of information when it comes to COVID-19, you can see that distribution. I do want to point out something that's interesting, and I'm pointing to the screen, which is extremely helpful, and this social media in the doctor's office is significantly less. So this is the same information, right? This would be the same source as the doctor or provider, but that is, once it goes to social media, perhaps it's less reliable, less trusted, I'm not sure, but it's certainly something that is interesting and useful for us to be thoughtful about. So some next steps, we are, we've provided this information to the Cedric County Health Department, and they have reviewed it, and they have already taken action, which I'll talk about in a moment, but the county is working on direct outreach, opportunities specifically for vaccine, and again, I'll talk about that in a moment. Also creating messages around vaccine, when, where it's available, to address misinformation and disinformation, and then the county's website has some updated information as well, and as well as the report. So I said Cedric County Health Department has already taken action, which is pretty fascinating, because we just presented these results to them, I think, last week. There are people who want to be vaccinated, so that was one of the findings, right? So we have people who are still saying, yes, they plan to be vaccinated, they want to be vaccinated. So the action that they've taken, and really doing a lot of mobile clinics, they've enhanced those efforts as well, so that event clinics are occurring where people are gathered. So I'm already going to be there, we already know populations are there, let's make the opportunity available for them then. Knowing that medical providers are trusted sources, and also that parents want to take their kids to their doctors to get the vaccines, that's useful information. They are already partnering with the medical community about the vaccine and letting them know, working with the Medical Society of Sedgwick County, that there are opportunities for, especially primary care providers, but really the medical community as a whole, to intervene and help have constructive conversations with their patients. And information also about residents not knowing where to go, that that would be helpful information. They're already sending mailers, they have door hangers that they're placing, and also, again, using mobile clinics for outreach. So they're already in motion using this information, and I am very pleased to answer any questions if you have any, but it's again, very relatively small sample for our county, but still some unique and interesting information to take from that.
Okay, any questions from anybody? Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you, Dr. Abloh, appreciate the update. I was kind of reflecting the other day on the change in attitudes of the public over the years. Back a few years ago, when I was in grade school, we were given the polio vaccine, and they just lined us up, and we all took the polio vaccine. Then they were giving us the smallpox vaccine, they just lined us up, and we all took the smallpox vaccine. I mean, the attitudes have changed a lot, it's kind of strange. But going back to your survey, I've got an 18-year-old granddaughter that hadn't gotten the vaccine, and so Monday I took her over to the library, and she did get the vaccine. So as I was driving her over to the library, well, I started quizzing her a little bit. First of all, I was interested, why did you change your mind and you decided to go over and get the vaccine? She says, well, I'm going to K-State this fall, and they'll let me in the football games. So that was at the top of her list, on how that is going to give her more freedom while she's going to college this fall. And so then I asked her, well, why didn't you want to get it? And she says, well, I'm afraid of needles. Well, it was interesting during the time we were sitting there, because they came around and gave her the vaccine and said, okay, we're all done, and she says, I didn't even feel it.
Yes.
So it was just something in her mind. So I don't know how that we're going to get those things across, that was one individual, but somehow we need to kind of work to get the information you've got out. But I'm very proud of our health department, what they've done over there with the vaccines. I know we're stomping the drive-through, but the walk-in is absolutely walk-in. We showed up about noon, we walked straight in, she started getting the paperwork done, and about 30 minutes later, we were back out of there after the paperwork and sitting there for 15 minutes at the end. So it's very convenient. I just want everybody to know that it is very, very easy, and it's not time-consuming. So those are my comments. I appreciate the update on why people aren't getting it. Hopefully, we can use this to make sure that we can get more people to be vaccinated.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you again for the presentation. I always love it when you come to speak with us, because you're one of those really smart people out there, too. So thank you for that. I am curious, where do we find the respondents to this? How do we, how do we connect with them?
It's a fantastic question. So I was not the one responsible for disseminating the survey out, the link out to respondents. Each of the local health departments were responsible for doing their own dissemination. So I think that's one of the, one of the reasons, unfortunately, that we had a smaller sample size. So I think that's one of the reasons unfortunately, that we had a smaller sample size, was that it was a shorter period of time. And I think COVID has waned in a lot of people's minds, that it's not as much of an issue. So I don't think people were as interested in responding this time. But yes, the health departments were responsible for distributing that survey, and it's an electronic survey only. We were going to originally do something on paper, and then realized this is not a good idea to do during COVID.
Very good. And again, I'm sure this is probably the plan, but would you please be willing to send us a copy of this survey?
Oh, most certainly.
Of the results, I should say. One of my questions on one of the slides, I don't know how to describe the slides, because I don't see the slide numbers on these, but one of the descriptions was no to slight concern. I think that was one of the earlier slides. I think that's it right there. So that description, I think the respondent would say that they have little concern about COVID. Is that the type of person that would be in the yellow? They have a little, they have very little concern about COVID? That's why they're yellow?
Thank you so much. So this is, the question is about the vaccine itself. So we do have, we did ask questions about if they are concerned about COVID. But these are specifically concerns about the vaccine.
I see.
Yeah.
Now, interestingly, I'm just trying to understand how the survey was done. So obviously, these add up to way more than 100%. So they were given options to, if you will, give their opinion on numerous things on this, relate to this particular slide.
Thank you, yes. Each item that is next to impossible for you to read. At the bottom, like on the far left, it's long-term side effects of the vaccine. The next to that on the right is vaccine will not be safe. So each of those were questions. Each was a question that was asked in the survey, and respondents could indicate moderate, some, or no, and then plus, you know, extreme and slight concerns.
So interpreting this slide a little bit, for example, it says, the yellow, the fourth from the right, it says, "The vaccine will give me COVID-19."
That's right.
They, these are people who believe that that's a possibility, so that's why they're not getting the vaccine.
You've got it. So the green and blue for that one. So green represents moderate to extreme concern, and blue is some concern. So really, the green are the folks who are saying, yeah, they're pretty concerned that the COVID vaccine will give them COVID.
Okay, now I see how you're interpreting that. Very good. That helps me very much. Okay. And I can use that same idea on the rest of these slides. So thank you for explaining that to me.
Absolutely. Well, it would be helpful if you could read it. I'm just going to say, having slightly larger font might help.
Thank you again for all the work there. Thank you.
Okay, Doctor, I don't see any other comments, so thanks again for the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Good information. I'll make a motion to receive and file. There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meisner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item B, Presentation of the District Attorney's Salary Study Results.
Mr. Bennett?
Hello?
Welcome to the commission. You brought a contingency of your fellow workers?
That's right.
These are all judges?
Every one of them. You're supposed to stand when they walk in.
Okay. Anyway, welcome to the meeting.
Market comparison?
Market comparison.
We got a bunch of them. Are they all the same?
There should be three. There's three, I'm missing one.
Oh. We gave us all of them at once. This is market comparison, here's the market comparison adjusted. What other one do we need?
This one.
Okay, got it.
What other one do I need?
Just this one, you got it all. Did you get it? No, he needs an adjusted. We got you, Chairman.
We got you.
Sorry, this is my first rodeo, apparently. You ready?
Ready.
Okay. Well, thank you for giving me some time this morning. When I made my budget presentation to you two, three weeks ago, I told you that I was going to come back with some more information specifically on salaries and recruitment and retention of assistant district attorneys. So the basic overview today is, I'm going to give you an overview of the office structure, the attorneys, the unit assignments. Talk about turnover, talk about attorney salary enhancements that we've gone through, have worked with the county for the last several years to try to bring us up to speed. We've got some comparables to other jurisdictions around the country, Wichita State helped us with that, and then comparables more local to the state of Kansas and Cedric County specifically. Talk about student debt and the impact that's having, as well as, excuse me, as well as a few specific examples to illustrate the point we're up against here. So right off the bat, the next slide you're seeing there shows the office overview. I think you all know what we do here at this point, I've come in and made this pitch enough times, but just to give you a sense of how the office is broken down. We have two attorneys in administration. We have three attorneys who do nothing but charge cases. And I can just give you as an example, you know, that may seem like a cushy job, you just sit in your office and look at cases to decide whether to charge. In 2019, those three attorneys reviewed 9,000 cases to make charging decisions. So it is a grind. The trial division, I should also point out, the trial division, the gang unit, and the domestic violence, sexual assault unit are really what makes up our trial, our criminal trial division. So that number is, it looks like 29, it's actually, I think, closer to 28 right at the moment, because we're down at an attorney. We have a financial crime unit as well, if I didn't say that before. So that trial criminal division, gang, domestic violence, financial crime, those are the lawyers who go in and handle our criminal cases every day. Consumer protection is just what it sounds like, it's a consumer protection civil unit. And then we've got appellate attorneys who handle all the appeals, juvenile offender, child needed care, traffic, and then a drug court position, which is basically a part-time position. We have an attorney who does that part-time, and then does other work as well. Annual turnover. So obviously, this is a concern to us. Over time, you can see that, I just went back 10 years, but since 2012, by my count, I think we lost, on this page, it'll show you 36 lawyers, it's actually 39, because three, we lost to the county. Other agencies within the county, and that's not listed here. They, if it's an internal county switch, that isn't reflected here, but it's certainly reflected in our office when someone leaves our office. So, but so that's 39 lawyers we've lost out of 50, 55 in less than the last 10 years. It's tough to keep the ball going and keep your cases moving when you have that kind of turnover. One other thing you'll see is, when I started off in the office, there was a, oh, a concept, I think, that people understood, and that the DA's office was a great place to go, learn to try cases, stay three years, come out with 10 or 15 jury trials under your belt, and then go to private practice. And so there was a lot of turnover with the one to three to five-year people. And you still see some of that reflected earlier on, but over time, that has changed. And I'll give credit where it's due. Mrs. Folston, my predecessor, came up to some of your predecessors and lobbied hard for better pay, so that the office of the district attorney could be a place that one could make a career out of. Candidly, without her having done that, I'm not here. I'm not standing here. I wouldn't have been able to raise a family and support a family on the 32 grand I was making a year, my first year in the office in 1997. And so I give a lot of credit to her and to other county commissions, previous county commissions, that recognized she needed to pay people a better salary. And that allowed some of folks like me to stay longer. And that's that core group who stick around year after year and handle, you know, the heavy lifting cases. But you'll see here, over time, we're seeing more on the color-coded chart, more yellows and oranges and reds toward the last three or four years of folks who were leaving after five and 10, and 10 to 20, and 20 to 30 years. Some of that's retirement, of course. But the five to 10-year range, that's a tough loss. Those are folks who by now, we're hoping are going to be more committed and want to stick around. Salary enhancements, we haven't just sat idly by and waited until the sky had fallen to finally come in here. We have worked with the county, and the county has, to its credit, been helpful. Number one, we've gotten cost of living increases, and just set forth there all of the things that have been, that we've done. I've worked with the county manager and finance to try to come up with ways to increase the salary. You know, one of the things we used to do more in the office was use salary savings at the end of the year to give one time, we didn't call them bonuses, but that's essentially what they felt like, is just one-time payouts. And I know that that was a, that was not an entirely universally accepted practice, and so something I did away with when I took over. It was not a way to increase salaries, but it was a way to obviously increase the amount of cash flow through an attorney's accounts. But we've been trying to, instead of just doing that, and sort of these quick fixes, try to raise salaries up, so there's more of a consistent, something people could rely on. The salary study itself, as I alluded to the last time I was before this body, we asked to be included in a salary study. There were some fits and starts with that, but ultimately, we were able to get the information that Wichita State gleaned from three cities around the country of comparable size at least, Greensboro, North Carolina, Little Rock, and Des Moines. And then we also checked more locally, regionally, all six district attorney's offices in Kansas. I should clarify, out of 105 counties, there are six of us that are district attorneys, that our districts are big enough to simply have one district. So our judges only operate in Cedric County, whereas if you're the county attorney in Kingman or Wellington, you share a district judge with other counties. So that is a larger district, that's why they're county attorneys, why I'm a district attorney, minor point. But we thought, well, let's go apples to apples here, and compare ourselves to the other six district attorney's offices. Riley County is kind of the next biggest that, at this point, could probably be a DA's office. I think they only share a county with maybe Clay Center, it's a very, but at any rate, we picked Riley County as well. City of Wichita, because there's prosecutors across the street in the city, and then other Cedric County departments, county councilor, court trustee, and the sheriff has an attorney. So the comparables, we have what we call staff attorney one. We had to do a little digging when we've got these reports back from other jurisdictions, because not everybody calls their, there's not a universally accepted way of referencing your attorney. What we call attorney ones, we go one, two, three, seniors, and kind of work your way up, others go three, two, one, you know. But at any rate, the point is, we were able to get through this and make a determination of what we're talking about. But what you'll see here, so our staff attorney one, these are our entry-level positions. And we got, from some counties, we got a high and low in a range, some gave us specific numbers, but the way we could consistently do this across all the comparisons was just give a midpoint. Here's the midpoint number for lowest and highest in a given salary, or excuse me, attorney description, so staff attorney one. And you can see that, looking at Windott, Shawnee, Johnson, we are lower than the rest, and considerably lower than some of our colleagues around the state. I'm not sure what's going on in Greensboro, North Carolina, must have a nice tax base there, because we are, they double, almost double us in terms of their salary for entry-level, but, and that may be a one-off, maybe that's an anomaly, but that was part of the salary study, so we included it. And let's see here, yeah, I think that's everything that's reflected on that page. At any point, if you have any questions, I don't want to go, I'm trying to be mindful of your time here, but if you have any questions, let me know. Staff attorney two, so these are folks that are going to have been around for four to six, eight years. They're out of the traffic division, they're handling more serious business. And again, we compared ourselves to the jurisdictions that were referenced before. If you'd say, for instance, staff attorney two in Reno County, there was not, they were not reflected, Hutch wasn't on the previous screen, it may be just that they don't have a staff attorney one. So we had to compare, trying to keep it apples to apples here. And again, you see that we are less than, in some respects, not a lot less than, but in, compared, depending on who you compare us to, a lot less than others. Comparable staff attorneys, staff attorney three, now these are folks who've been around, we're pushing 10 years now. These are the folks we're hoping to, you know, get them to commit. At this point, you've been with us long enough, you've tried cases, you know what you're doing. We're hoping that they stick around for another, you know, make a career of this before maybe they run for judge, or they, you know, make some other life choice. But we're really hoping to keep these folks, and you can see where we fall there, really toward the, again, the lower end of the spectrum, compared to our counterparts in both the state and nationally. Senior attorneys, so they're just what they sound like. These are people who've been around the longest, they should be able to handle any case we give to them, from homicides on down. We make a distinction between senior attorneys and chief attorneys. A chief attorney is somebody who is a senior attorney who also has administrative responsibilities for supervising groups of attorneys. But a senior attorney is somebody who, like I said, should be able to handle any homicide we give them, really any kind of heavy lifting business that we would give them. And we are, again, on the lowest end of the spectrum compared to our counterparts. Comparables to the city of Wichita, so again, we're talking about city prosecutor's offices. Our staff attorney ones are a hair, actually get paid a little bit better, a midpoint, our entry level 656.5. You can see, see when you get, that quickly changes, their ceiling gets a lot higher, a lot faster. And then in the next slide, for their city prosecutors two, pardon me, our midpoint is almost 20 grand less than their midpoint after a person's been there for a short time. Comparables to Cedric County, the court trustee is the only entity doing worse than us. I will be clear on one thing, the legal advisor to the sheriff, the sheriff's attorney, I think there's only one position there, so it's, but we're trying to be, you know, as best we could, make a comparison to exactly other attorneys who are in the county's structure. Then obviously, the county councilor's office at the high end of things. So one of the things that concerns me is, I interview people coming out of law school. And we do, you may have seen, if you've been to the traffic court, as you go around and check things out around the county, you'll see that each summer, we have a group of young people, what we call two L's. Law school's a three-year program, so you go after your first year, after your second year, two L, that's as referred to, between your second and third year of law school, you are eligible to come and be an intern in a law practice. And if you are supervised by a supervising attorney, you can apply for and get a license, temporary license, for the summer to practice law. Got to be supervised, obviously, but that allows them to come in here and spend a summer with us. Hopefully, to be quite candid with you, we show them what an, you know, engaging practice of law that we have to offer. We get a chance to interact with them and see their work ethic, but it's a kind of a grow-your-own-lawyer practice. And I need to at some point go through the office and raising hands, who was an intern in our office who later came back to work for us? And it's been very, very productive for us, because, for instance, I've hired four kids coming out of law school this coming fall, and at least one, if not two of them, were interns for us in the past. And so that's been, that's been great. But as I interview these young people coming out of law school, on more than one occasion, I will offer them, say, "Look, I'm offering 56.5," or 56, 55, you know, in the years passed. And I've had people come back and say, "I appreciate that. I can't survive on that. My law school debt is so high, or my college debt is so high." And so we thought, I'd like to know more specifically, what am I up against here? And so on average, we contacted KU in Washburn, because 99% of the folks coming back to us in this state went to school at one of those two places. And on average, according to the law schools, that's the law school debt, not the college debt that they accrued in the four years preceding law school, but just coming out of law school, roughly 40 grand per school. And, or excuse me, that's what it costs, excuse me. And then the debt load is below, is 84,000, 86,000 for the two schools. So let's just mid-number there, 85,000. So on top of whatever it costs you to go to undergrad for four years, five years, then you want to go to law school, and you come out with another 85 grand in debt coming out of law school, on top of your undergrad. Let's assume you did a very good job, and were only $30,000 or $40,000 in debt coming out of undergrad, $10,000 a year. Worked, lived at home, had a few expenses, it's about nine to 10 grand to go to a state four-year college right now. So unless you, you know, independently wealthy, or had your, were lucky- now. So unless you, you know, independently wealthy or had your, were lucky enough to have folks who stocked away for you, 10 grand a year is not an uncommon amount. So we're, now you are on on average, somewhere in the neighborhood of 110, 120,000 dollars in debt. Some mortgage payment, folks. And so on top of everything else before they can come to work, get a house, et cetera, they've got a mortgage payment hanging over their head. Now, the the simple answer to that is, well, they, you know, you chose to take that on when you went to law school. That's not our problem. And that's true. However, if I want to hire good people to sit in the courtrooms in this courthouse and represent the citizens of this community, as we stand up and try to hold people accountable and seek justice on behalf of victims in this community for homicides and rapes and property crimes and everything else, I'd like to know that the people on the side of the room that I sit on are competent, committed, intelligent people who want to make their community better, not just the folks who are either independently wealthy enough not to have been so far in debt they couldn't afford to work for me, or folks who just have no better options. And to be clear, that's not what we have now. We have those committed, intelligent people working for us. But on their behalf, I'm up here today asking for help. And more to the point, on their behalf, they want to know that the next round, the next generation of attorneys coming in to support them are also as committed as they are and capable and in a position to do the kind of work that the people who came before me did, that I've done, and the folks who have been, come up behind me have done. So that's the general thing coming out of KU and Washburn. Let's get specific about my office. We did a anonymous Survey Monkey survey. We got 47 respondents. And of those, you can see their debt ranges from 5,000 to 225,000 dollars in debt. Now, the ones who are 5,000 dollar range, several of them, those folks have already paid it off. They've been with us long enough, they managed to pay it off. And there are some federal programs to assist people who are in the public sector with this sort of thing. However, until recently, they have not been particularly user-friendly, shall we say. For instance, I've got an attorney who applied for grants to, that help pay off student debt, law school debt, if you are in the public sector, you're a public sector lawyer. And she should have been eligible. However, her household made too much money, so she wasn't. The problem is, her husband is also a lawyer, a public sector lawyer working in a county attorney's office in the neighboring county. He's not eligible because his household made too much. And they said, okay, we're both doing this at the same time. They ignored the fact that each one was married to another public sector lawyer and just said, your household makes too much. And so they were each working against each other for eligibility. And so they have both, over the last 10 to 15 years, just paid it off and paid it off at a grind because they both believe in the work they do in our respective offices, in this county, in this county and in our neighboring county. Bottom line, the average law school debt, average debt for my lawyers is right in line with what KU and Washburn said, about 80 grand. Their payments range from 98 dollars a month to 1,240 a month. Again, sounds like a mortgage payment to me. So, and the average monthly payment was 525, so a car payment. I've got some other things here I want to show you. We've got these market comparisons here. I think you've got the color copies in front of you. So what we did is, instead of just saying a general overview, I wanted to get more specific in terms of attorney's positions. So we'll start with, you kind of have to almost start on the second page and work our way back to the front. But if you compare us to all the other counties, all the other jurisdictions we looked at, the average attorney in our salary, excuse me, attorney one position is making about 18 grand below market value. The attorney two is about 10,600. Attorney three, 17,000. Attorney, excuse me, senior attorney is 25,000. And then the chief and chiefs attorneys were about 13,000. Our deputies, our two deputies are actually doing, doing pretty well compared to their counterparts. But but you look at that and you recognize you got Johnson County, Kansas, and we all know that Johnson County's tax base is just, you know, apples to giraffes compared to us. And so, and also, again, I don't know the Greensboro, North Carolina jurisdiction, I don't know what's going on there. But whatever's happening there, they must be doing fairly well to pay their, I mean, they're, they're paying really, really well for their DA's office. But let's, okay, let's adjust this. So we'll take those two out, just so we don't skew the numbers. And just looking at, and by the way, to finish that thought, all told, we're about a million dollars under what we would, what those other jurisdictions are making. But we take out Johnson County, that's the adjusted. Take out Johnson County, take out Greensboro, North Carolina. And we still are talking about 9,000 below market value for attorney ones, 2,000, 2,800 for attorney two, 14,000 for attorney threes, 22,000 for senior attorneys, 1,500 for the chiefs. And then our deputies are still doing okay. Couple of other things I want to point out before I get to my final anecdotes. I had a, we're a part of, you may, you probably have heard of Sedgwick County, so the sheriff, WPD, all the alphabet soup of federal agencies that work in this jurisdiction. We've all been a part of what's called the PSN or PSP grant from the feds. And there, we meet bi-weekly with, on a conference call, we're talking about ways to address gun violence, et cetera. And part of that grant, they're giving money to the WPD and different agencies trying to assist in reducing gun violence. As part of the grant money, there was a small amount available for my office. And we use that to pay for a study to help us see if we could get an outside agency in to look at our efficiencies within the office, how we run our dockets, how we handle our business. Because candidly, one of the things that I hear from my attorneys is not just, you know, for the money, is, you know, it's galling, I think, for folks to look around and see what other folks are making when they know how much work we are doing. But one of the other concerns has been the number of dockets we have to attend to. I told you in my last presentation that just during 2020 alone, despite the pandemic, despite the shutdowns and the restrictions in terms of spacing and masks, et cetera, this, my office with the, with the, in the criminal department of this jurisdiction alone, attended, dealt with 15,000 hearings. It's a lot of work for a small number of people. And so the question was, is there a way we can be more efficient and have fewer hearings? And how, you know, how I send you to this court, are you then running to another one an hour later? I mean, and so that was really the grabment of what I asked this organization to come in and do. And it was two to, two attorneys primarily, each with 35-plus years of experience in the Manhattan, New York district attorney's office. They now are in essentially private practice since having retired. And they go around and do these audits for prosecutor's offices around the country. Here's what you need to do. Here's how you can run your shot more efficiently, a fresh set of eyes who knows the world that you operate in. And so it was not a salary study in any, by any stretch. But what they did say to us was, and I've got the report, it just came, the final report just came down last week, I believe. She said, your caseloads for your attorneys, she goes, are breathtaking. It's, she goes, it's insane what you're expecting your lawyers to do. We just, this morning, standing out here waiting on our turn to come in, and pointed, Anne Swigle found a report come up. It was a discussion from another jurisdiction in Washington State. The DA there was making a pitch to somebody, I didn't see which, whether it was his county commissioner whom, who's complaining, not complaining, but illustrating what insane caseloads they had in Olympia, Washington, because his lawyers were carrying 67 cases apiece. Let's take a quick look at my caseloads from my lawyers. My chief lawyers, the ones who not only are, been around 10, 20, I mean, I don't think anyone's been 10 years, they're all at least 15 plus. These are lawyers who are the highest level you can get and still be practicing, you know, having average cases. We have two deputies, and then the rest are chiefs. These chief lawyers who supervise units. And so they're responsible not only for their own caseload, but for the five or six lawyers that they answer to them. 211 cases, 210 cases, 151 cases, 93 cases. My lowest, the guy with the fewest number of cases, 75. Their average caseload is 148 cases. These are not misdemeanors and fishing game cases, these are felonies, heavy lifting, homicides, child sex, you know, attempted murder cases. Then you go through the rest of my attorney staff, and the average caseload, and this includes folks who are kind of on the early stage of their career, who are doing, you know, 90, 92, 66 cases. Even my lowest entry level kids who are just coming out of the traffic, and we start them in traffic, and then they matriculate their way into the office, are in the 45 to 90 stretch. Everyone else might, are in the 177 to 110. Average caseload, 136 cases. So on top of, I mean, her recommendation to me is, and it's really not part of my presentation to you today, I'm just, I'm just trying to deal with the people I've got, I'm trying to help, trying to fight for the people who work for me now. But one of her recommendations is on top of ways to run our dockets better, she goes, you need help. You need more lawyers. There's only two ways to reduce caseloads. Charge fewer cases and simply tell your community, I do not have time for that, or that, or that. Or get more help to handle the caseloads and disperse it out a bit. But it speaks to the salary issue as well. While we're on top of everything else, while we're underpaid, what we, the expectations on these lawyers are huge. And so that leads me to my final group of sort of anecdotes here. And that is that, so the last page there, it says same class, 22,000. What that means is, I have a lawyer in our domestic violence unit, and her caseload right now is 148 cases. That's how many she's carrying right now. You know, a few of them may be on warrant status, but most of her cases are filed cases on her desk. She has two classmates from law school, graduated the same year as her, who also work in the county. One makes 22,000 dollars a year more than her, works for the county councilor's office, and another, works in another agency within the county, makes 23,000. I don't in any way dismiss the work those other two attorneys are doing for the county and their respective units and their respective divisions. But for an attorney who came out of law school, went to the same, you know, four years of college, three years of law school, graduated the same year, passed the bar, went to work in the public sector, in the same public sector, in the same jurisdiction, to have two classmates who are making 20 grand a year more, working in the same building, I don't have an explanation for that. And I apologize to her for not having been here fighting for that harder. The reality is, it's, there's much smaller groups of folks. The county councilor doesn't have to, doesn't have 50 lawyers, they have a much smaller number. Sheriff's office has one lawyer. So when I come up and ask for a 10% raise for anybody, I mean, it's a huge number because I have so many lawyers. I understand that. But I do need, I think that is illustrative of the issue we're up against. Just lost an attorney who's been with us for 10 or 12 years, and she went to the county councilor's office. It's good, it's a good move for her. She got a 10% increase by moving one floor up from the second to the third floor. I heard this this morning, I thought this was very telling. One of our court guards, people who work for the county and our security, was telling one of our lawyers that he's going to take another position, put in his two weeks, and he's going to go into HVAC, heating and air. And he's going to make, he told us, he told my attorney what he's going to make in an hour. On average, it's two bucks an hour more than my entry level attorneys. My final example, and then, you know, and I know not everything's apple. I'm not making the comparison that everything's exactly apples to apples here. I know there are exceptions, and there's all sorts of other things that go into this. But just the one that kind of jumped out at me was, you know, we want, you know, we worry about a brain drain. We want good kids who grew up in this area, Sedgwick County, Butler County, whatever, to stay in the core area. We want them to go off to college. We want them to go off to, you know, become engineers, become, you know, EMTs, doctors, and come back and serve their communities. One that, an example though that just shocked me was, I've got an attorney who works for me, number of years of experience. This is somebody who went back to law school later in life. She had a career. She worked in the DA's office in Shawnee County for many years as a support staff. And somebody went to her, one of those attorneys up there says, you know, you, you are capable of doing the work I do, and encouraged her to go back to law school. And so later in life, she did that, to her credit, to her, I mean, what a thing to do. I mean, it's tough to stop what you're doing at, you know, 30 years of age and say, I'm going to take a new track. And she did. And she's down here, and she's worked for us for a number of years. She's a hard charger, she's a good lawyer. Her stepdaughter just graduated in May from dental hygienist school at Wichita State. Her first job, the dental hygienist is going to be making more than her stepmom, my lawyer, who's been out as a practicing lawyer for, you know, what, six, eight years. So those are the examples. The final thing I'll say, which isn't included here, I alluded to it the other day when I was here, and is the, kind of the final point to make on the debt. I'll be candid with you. When I first had this idea floated to me, I thought it was dead on arrival. I thought it was just, you know, a complete non-starter. But the more I thought about it, the more I'm going to at least float this. Whether it has any support or not, I understand. I know it's a big ask. But I think there is a way, and over the last several years, like Lindsay or somebody could, I'm sure, tell you how much money this office has given back to the county each year through two reasons. One, we're careful about how we spend it. And number two, you can see from the turnover, it's salary savings. When I lose people, salary savings accrue over the course of year, and so we give it back because we're losing folks. Could we take some of that salary? Last year, I think it was close to 900,000 roughly that I gave back to the county. Could we earmark some of that? Could we earmark money somewhere for some sort of incentive program for these lawyers? It would be a recruitment tool, and maybe hopefully it would be more to the point, a retention tool. To say, once you've been with us for two years, three years, we put two grand a year toward your college debt for five years, six years, 10 years. I mean, not forever, not going to pay it all off. You took on this debt, you need to pay it off. But, you know, I know in the private sector, that's another thing. Lawyers coming out of law school, one of the things their laws, law firms will do, it's a recruitment tool to get the best and the brightest, is to say, we will take on some of your law school debt, maybe pay it off. I'm not going to say that's universal. It's not. But that is something that that is done in the, in the field. So I'm not asking for the county to promise to pay up 100 grand or 80 grand per kid every time after one year of working for us. But there is a way that wouldn't, would not add to the overall debt load or to the overall budget of the county if I use salary savings for that sort of thing. Final thing I'll say is, I have, so I've made my case. So what's the pitch? What am I asking for? First of all, I want to say I've been, I want to, I want to publicly acknowledge the county council, or excuse me, county manager's office, the finance department, and we have been working, NHR, we've been working with Sheena and Lindsay and Tom, and talking about what is feasible for us. And over the next month or so, I hope to hear back. So with the first order businesses, we put in for some ARPA funds. There is an opportunity there for a one-time outlay of funds to help pay, to recognize the work done. 15,000 hearings, 1,900 cases resolved during 2020, despite every hurdle that could be put against us. And put some money, one-time payouts, not a salary increase, but a one-time payout for some of my lawyers so they could feel some relief right now in the moment. Number two, I'm asking for consideration for whatever cost of living adjustment the county gets. Obviously, I'm asking my folks to get that as well. Three, the, I understand that there is, the final budget is being put together, but I understand money has been earmarked at least for a salary increase in January of 2022. Long term, though, as you can see, even eliminating Johnson County, even eliminating Greensboro, North Carolina, just comparing us to our counterparts in the state of Kansas, we're still 700,000 dollars under budget for, by comparison. And so I think it's going to take a commitment from me to come up here each year and make sure that you're aware of this. And I'm asking for a commitment over time, whether it's in writing or verbal or whatever, but a commitment at least to the idea that we, that my office is going to need some help in terms of getting us up to speed. A 2.5 COLA year after year is just not keeping us at pace. Talked to some, I lost two senior level attorneys to Riley County about a year ago. One of them got paid 30 grand a year more to go to Riley County, and his counterpart got paid, I think, 27 a year more. I can't argue with that. And I talked to one of them, and he said, yeah, we just got a 5% mid-year salary adjustment. So they're making, they're doing even better than they were when they first got there with a 25,000 plus increase in salary. I can't compete with that. Now, the distinction is, my good friend in Riley County, who's the county attorney up there, you know, he's got six, seven lawyers. That's all, you know, so he has to come to his county commissioner and say, hey, can I have a 100 grand, you know, they can find- You know, they can find that, and he can pass it around among five or six people, and it makes a big, huge difference. I've got fifty lawyers, which is not enough at this point, given the caseloads we're dealing with. And so for me to come in and ask for ten thousand dollars per lawyer, or twenty grand per lawyer, I mean, I recognize that is devastating, you couldn't do that. But I am gonna ask that we commit to trying to keep this at the front of our minds and, and make a commitment over the next year or two. I hate to go too much further than that, 'cause I'll be honest with you, I don't know how many, you know, there'll be turnover, and the next folks may come in and not have the same vision that this, that this body does today. But I, I, I need to ask, I need frankly, for my folks to see me up here asking, they need to know that, that their workload is being recognized by the community, by their boss. And I'll leave you with this, you know, I, I came to work here in ninety-seven thinking at the time, "I'll stay for three or four years, and then I'll go on and figure out what I'm gonna do with the rest of my life." And I got myself involved in some very serious cases in a very short amount of time, and I remember standing in front of a jury in December of two thousand and one, making closing, closing arguments on behalf of four African-American mothers who were sitting in the front row looking at me, because their four children had been killed in a, in a, in a single quadruple homicide the week before the Carr brothers' case. And I went home that night and thought, "This is where I need to be." Now, I was the beneficiary of a district attorney at the time, who came up here and asked for, and was given an amount of money that allowed me to at least pay my mortgage and, and buy a ratty used car that I could get back and forth to the courthouse. But I cared about this office and the work we do here enough to stick it out for the last twenty-four, five years. And I'm, I, I believe in the work we do here, and I, but I also recognize, I'm here for a finite amount of time, and four more, three more, three and a half years, voters could decide they need somebody else to do this. Fine. I'll work, you know, like hell to keep that from happening, or at least to keep, keep anyone from thinking that needs to happen, that if I'm doing my job, hopefully it doesn't. But I want the next DA, I want the next group of ADAs and chief attorneys and, and deputy attorneys who come to work here to believe in the same, work with the same fervor and the same passion to ethics and to doing it right. And, and the power in the hands of this office is important enough, we wanna make sure we get the right people in there. And to do so, you, you gotta pay for it. So, that's my pitch, I'll answer any questions you might have, but I do appreciate the amount of time you've given me this morning, 'cause it obviously matters a lot to me and my folks.
Mark, thank, thank you for all this information, it's incredibly helpful for us to understand. I know we've had some discussions, and I've talked a little bit with Lindsay and Tom, and we've talked publicly and privately, and I think, I think there's some energy that we can throw at this to try to help ease this pain. I think we talked about, it's complicated for us to pay college debt, if I recall, so we probably have to focus on trying to get you more people and better pay.
Understand.
Seems to be the, the theme, but I'll let other commissioners have comments here. Commissioner Dennis?
Thanks, Commissioner. Chairman, Mark, thank you very much for being here and representing your district attorney's office very well, we appreciate it. And if I looked in a crystal ball, I don't see it getting better as far as your workload. We just saw yesterday, the city council teamed up with the US Marshals, and they're gonna go out and arrest a whole lot of folks, and that's gonna fill up our jails and fill up your caseload.
Yes, sir.
So, we can't solve that part of it, but we can take a look at the other part of it that you addressed today, and that's what the pay and compensation is for your attorneys. And, and we've been working with Sheena and with Lindsay and with the manager for some time, because it's not just in your office that we're looking at a problem. You know, we've got hundreds of openings throughout the county, and, and we recognize that a lot of that is because of pay. So, I, I can't tell you right now exactly what the budget's gonna look like that comes out of the manager's office here in a couple of weeks, but we, we are hearing what you're saying, and, and we understand what your concerns are. So, again, I appreciate what you're doing for your organization, because that is important as you speak up as the leader of that, and let us know what the concerns are, so.
I appreciate it.
We'll take a look in the future.
And we'll continue to, to drill down on numbers and comparables and anything else as we get more information. We're trying to also compare our caseloads, and just anything we can do to shed a light on this and be as specific as possible. So as that information comes in, we'll continue to share it with Sheena, Lindsay, the manager's office.
Again, thank you again for your briefing.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. What is the issue with paying, helping pay student loans? I didn't realize that that was...
I believe it might be some tax implications.
It would be, I'm sure it would be considered income for the attorneys, but...
Yeah, that's right.
It's, it's a conversation worth having, and seeing if it's possible, if it's not, so be it, but, but I at least needed to float the idea.
Coming from Ascension, what we did is, if someone signed on a contract for working X amount of years, then we would pay so much of their student loans back. And I don't know if it went by how many years they signed the contract, we would pay more, I mean, it was pretty flexible, but I think, I would really like to see us do something, maybe for not just one department, but I, I do see that this could be, something like that could be really helpful for the county, just overall, keeping people, because we are struggling so bad at retaining our talent here, and it's a lot more expensive to recruit and retrain and lose, you know, years of service and, and grasp of the job.
I think that one of the things that's hurting everybody in all these agencies you're talking about within the county structure, anyone with a professional degree, anything that takes a college degree, an advanced degree beyond that, you know, I hate to say this out loud, 'cause every college kid in the jurisdiction will wanna kick me in the shins, but I paid six hundred bucks a semester to go to K-State my first year, you know. I, I know, having a, a daughter who's at, at K-State this year, she ain't paying six hundred bucks a semester, but that is a factor. I mean, the student loan debt that, that, that these kids are coming out of school with, who wanna be an EMT, or wanna be a physician, or wanna work at Calm Care with a clinician, you know, some kind of clinical degree, or wanna be in a DA with a, you know, a mat, a juris doctorate, it's just not what it was twenty and thirty years ago. So, that's, I think that's got to be, I, I've gotta believe that's a, that's a factor of what, what's been, making it tougher to keep people.
Yeah, that is absolutely a factor. I mean, if we're having to pay a mortgage payment, plus another, basically, a mortgage payment, and trying to raise young children, it's just, it's impossible to do everything. So I think if we can help in that way, I would really like to at least see options of what that could look like.
Commissioner, Mark and I talked about this, probably two or three weeks ago in his office, about options, and, and just to remind the commission, the, the county is, just completed a rather extensive market analysis, we have a strategy in place, as soon as the fiscal twenty-twenty-two, our budget hits, DA's office has been giving consideration in that budget, as we, and I've told the commissioners this before, this commission did not create this problem, but this commission's gonna have to try to solve it. This has been ten, fifteen, twenty years in the making, what the DA has talked about today, and organizationally, and the first thing we have to do is right the ship with reclassification, and then look very thoughtfully and strategically about things we can do organizationally regarding student loan forgiveness, signing bonuses, retention bonuses, things this county has never considered, had never had to consider historically, but as you look across the spectrum of the nation today, economically, all businesses are considering this kind of strategy. We're gonna have to, to, to join that study. So, we look forward to working with Mark, he's always fair and, and reasonable when we talk with him, and we will look for strategies that help his office, as well as strategies that will right the, the rest of the organization, so.
Thank you.
And Mark, you paid a hundred and fifty dollars a semester more than I did.
Yeah, I think that says something about our age. Chairman.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Thank you, Mark, for being here today. You know, as always, anytime I get an opportunity to talk about keeping people out of our court systems, prevention programs, funding those things that reduce crime, funding substance misuse disorder treatments, funding mental health, funding all of those things that will keep people out of our court systems to begin with, I wonder if we put our money there, how we could reduce the number of cases that your attorneys have. Last week, we had the opportunity to sit and listen to almost a two-hour presentation from the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition that talked about just that, going upstream, getting people the help that they need before they commit those crimes, before they use those drugs that prevent them from, you know, being a productive member of society. The ARPA funds, there was just a thirty-five-page document that came out about new guidance around the ARPA funds, and talking about funding a backlog of court cases. I think it's important to understand, there is some money coming into our community, and how can we use that? You mentioned it, so I'm, I'm happy to know that you're already sort of on that track. But I just can't stress enough how, Tom, you mentioned it wasn't this commission that got us in this, but we have the opportunity to get us out of this. We have the opportunity to really focus in on those things that keep people out of our court system. And I am supportive, we have to absolutely start doing things differently in regards to compensating our people. Just yesterday, I rode with some EMS professionals, and when we rolled up on one of the, the calls, it was amazing to see, I mean, just the amount of public service professionals that were around one individual, and to know that those people make less than twenty bucks an hour, and they're saving people's lives, you're saving people's lives, I think it's important to really start valuing the people who do that work. And you, and I, I really want you to know, and I want your staff to know, and I want every single public servant that's listening right now to know that I value your work. And I'm fighting for those, in, in those conversations, to have a better compensation model, 'cause it's time to start doing things differently, and that's what I'm gonna be doing. So I, I appreciate your time today, these numbers don't lie, seeing it in black and white, 'cause we didn't get a color copy.
Sorry, I'll, I'll make that happen. Trying to keep our costs low with a color copy.
That's right, we do things to keep those costs low, okay. Well, thank you for being here, I appreciate all that you do.
I, I will say, just looking at my caseloads, there's one attorney who has two hundred and seventy-seven cases, however, I know, the reason he has that is because he is also running what we call our IID docket, and, and that's the folks that we're trying to get through the system as fast as possible with the, the quickest outcome. He also ran a program the end of last year, in December, where we offered, we, we pulled some cases in, we, I don't wanna take too much time here, but we had some low-level drug cases that, they were serious enough, and had, these people had issues enough that we had to deal with them. But he ran about two hundred cases through the system by, we got with Ellen House, she paid for two lawyers, we got with Calm Care, we got with SAC, I think those are the two primary, and they offered a reduced cut rate treatment, and we put these people through the system, offered a misdemeanors, pay your restitution if you had a property crime, get into drug treatment if it's just a drug crime, and two hundred cases were resolved. That was essentially a, at least one, maybe two attorneys' yearly caseload, by simply throwing, you know, being creative about how we, how we attended to these cases, getting the cooperation of other stakeholders, court system, had two lawyers had to be paid for, and the courts, courts paid for that, I couldn't, it's unethical for me to pay for the defense. But my point is, even with our numbers, I, I didn't wanna take, you know, a day to drill down here, but even with our numbers, are reflected, a recognition of what you've already said, which is, there are other ways we can do this, other than simply, you know, running every case through the system, every case through a jury trial. We want people to pay their restitution, make victims whole, get into treatment if they need it. But we're, we're constantly working with the legislature, trying to figure out ways to do that in a, in a efficient manner. Getting a guy held, holding them accountable four years after they had the meth in their pocket, I mean, they've lived a life since then, so I, I'll stop, but I echo what you're saying.
Commissioner Howell?
Hey, thank you, Chairman, and Attorney Bennett, thank you for being here.
Sure.
Let me start off by saying, I think you do a tremendous job, and I think you have great staff.
Thank you.
I wish we could give everybody, I wish we could give everybody a lot more money, that'd be, that'd be a great thing, if we could do that. Obviously, this is a, it's always gonna be a challenge to, to pay people what, really, I know, to pay them what they deserve. I think that's, that's a challenge, of course. In fact, I would, I would say that, you know, based on the market study we received, I think in February, I, I think that we could make the, make the argument that the entire organization, generally speaking, is under, under, underpaid compared to market studies, and so I'm not surprised with this one. But a couple of questions for you, I am, I am curious if, if you do exit interviews on your staff that leave, and you have some type of ideas as to where they're going and why they're leaving, and is that available to anybody? I mean, you, you just talked about that a little bit this morning, but I guess I'd like to know, what, what is your process for exit interviews?
We, we have never done a formalized, sit down and fill this thing out, but we do, I, I specifically talk to people when they come and tell me they're leaving, and I always make myself available to say, you know, I'd like to know why. I can tell you that the folks who've left, there are a few anecdotes, husband, we just lost a very bright young woman whose husband was at McConnell, the only reason they were in Wichita is 'cause he was there, and then he's been transferred down to the West Coast. You know, it's unavoidable, and, but what I hear from folks is, you know, people, I put it in two categories. I had a young woman who came to me and left after ten, eleven years, and she went to the federal public defender's office. I'm like, "Well, okay, that's a switch, you're gonna go from prosecuting to, to the defense, and at the federal level." But she told me that the amount of money they were gonna pay her was the difference between paying off her student loans in fifteen years as opposed to thirty. It was a, almost a, I wanna say twenty-five thousand dollar plus salary increase for her. And I was like, "I can't, you'd be crazy not to take that." That's the conver, that's about half the conversation, maybe about sixty to seventy percent of the people leave, it's that they finally have reached a point where they go, "I just can't turn down this kind of money." And by the way, I've compared us to other public institutions. If I compared us to the private sector, I, I mean, there's just no comparison at all. I mean, the kids got, coming out of law school could literally make twice, going to the private sector in some firms, so, and, but that's been the surprising thing to me over the last ten years. When I started, we lost people to private practice, they would go and work for a private firm. There's a little of that, but a handful have left. Of the thirty-eight, I, I can get you an exact answer, a handful have left for private practice. Most are leaving for other public sector jobs, and they're still making fifteen, twenty, eighteen thousand dollars a year more, going to other private sector jobs, which leads to the second thing, is like, "Well, if you're gonna go to the pri, public sector, what, why?" The second part is, and this is part of the caseload analysis, and that is the grind. I had one attorney tell me, and she was one who was gonna go into private practice, she said, "I'm, everything we deal with every day is heavy, emotionally heavy, it is difficult work." I, and when I interview people, I have to explain to them, "I know this sounds exciting, and it's a fun place to work, it is." I always kinda joke, "It's the most miserable place you'll ever love to work." But no one has business with my office, because something good happened to them. If you are, if you arrive at my door, it's because something bad happened to you or someone you care about. That's it, there's no other category. And at some point, it become, the, the caseload is just overwhelming, day after day after day. I had an attorney stand in my office and said, "I'm just, I wanna go someplace where I see people," she's gonna do adoptions, she said, "I, I'd like to get hugged at and not screamed at, at the end of the night, at the end of a day's work." I'm like, "All right, I get that." That's more, that speaks to caseloads, so.
Well, if you don't mind, again, I guess the reason I think this is important is because, you know, I've, I've spoken about this in the past, but, you know, there, there are all kinds of reasons why, why people leave jobs. You mentioned retirements, which obviously, that's not a fault of anybody, someone just says, "I'm just ready to retire," and so that's not...
It's a success that we kept them that long.
There's no failure anywhere in the system, it's just, it's just a normal, a normal step in someone's career progression, so, maybe it's because of location, they wanna live closer to family, or maybe there's a health problem, many times it's opportunity. And they have opportunities that they would like to take advantage of, and, you know, as they link, especially if they're a younger attorney, they look at, look at this as a, as a career progression. In fact, working in the same job, you usually get, you know, let's say you're currency two and a half percent COLA increase per year, but if you change jobs, you might get a ten thousand dollar increase, and so there's almost an incentive, if you will, to change organizations or change positions, and I think that many people understand that. So, some of this, I, I don't look, I don't look at this as, as if there's a failure in the, in the, it's just, it's just what we, we would expect, and so, I'm looking, I'm looking at, again, I think the exit interviews would maybe classify people into two categories and say, "These are ones we failed, we didn't do enough, and they wanted to stay here, but they couldn't because we didn't pay them correctly. These other ones, they left because they had huge opportunities, they're retiring, they have health problems," or whatever it would be. they have health problems, or whatever it would be. I'd like to, now, I don't know if there's a way to separate this out, but exit interviews would be one way to get there. Looking at your data on Slides 4 and 5, a couple of things I'll just note here. You mentioned 38 separations over 10 years, so it would be an average of about, just about four per year. Some years are higher or lower. I do notice that 2013, the two slides don't agree with each other. One says two, one says one. But I also noticed that on Slide 4, you provided a turnover rate. So I'd like to ask you, what, how do you define turnover rate? Is it the total number of staff positions that are compared to the number of people who left that year? I mean, how do you, how do you calculate that?
I believe that's how we, how we did it, number of attorneys compared to the number that left.
And you mentioned FTEs, or the goal is 55, I think is what you said?
If we're fully staffed, I think we have 54, 55, yes.
So noticing, for example, you had five separations in 19, 20, and 21. 21, I guess, is higher because we're halfway through the year, because there's a nine, I'm sorry, a 7% increase between 20 and 21, even though we're halfway through 21. But same number of separations, you would think it'd be the same turnover rate.
I assume it's because of where we are six months into the year.
Okay, okay, very good. That explains that. Again, I do think that the, the next slide, Slide 5, it makes me think maybe a lot of, a lot of retirements potentially in that group. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but.
I can say of the orange-colored, yes, those are retirements, but the greens and yellows and, you know, they are not. So of that group, I can say one, Kim, I think, maybe five in the last nine years as opposed to the other 30, what did I say, 33, 32, or were not retirements.
So just an observation, again, if our average is around 4% per year, and, I'm sorry, excuse me, 4 per year, which is an average of around, about, let's say, 8% or 9% per year total, we're not drastically different through 2020, except for 2021, and actually does stand out as being a different, because again, we're only halfway through the year. So just, just an observation. I don't, I don't disagree that, you know, money may help this, and I think that we should certainly consider that. But I do think that this is much broader than just one organization. I think this is really a county-wide organization problem as well. With that, I don't think I have any other comments or questions. I guess I do have one final question. You mentioned earlier some salary savings that would be available. I don't know how often that happens, but if we are consistently low, if we consistently year, every year have a salary savings, I guess I'm curious, is your FTE count the correct, right number, perhaps? Again, a lot of these organizations will say, we're doing a lot more work with less people, we're more, we're more efficient in that regard. I would argue that one of the options for, I think, any organization would say, if you can continue to do with less number of people, that money, the money that's saved in salary savings, I think is very arguably something you should give to the remaining employees because they're essentially doing the work, the work they used to do plus a whole lot more. So salary savings, if this is, if this is happening year after year after year, it does seem very reasonable that you could be able to split that up and essentially increase the salary of those that are doing that work.
And that speaks maybe to what I said earlier about having some concerns about just asking for a three- or five-year commitment, because I don't know who's going to be on the county commission in three or four or five years. And I say that, it may seem odd, non-secular to what you just said, but 10 years ago, that's what Mrs. Fullston used to do with the salary savings. She would at the end of the year, which she called a performance-based initiative. And there was some consternation among that county commission at that time, that using taxpayer money for bonuses at the end of the year, Christmas bonuses, was not, was not in the, in keeping with what that county commission wanted her to do. I recognized that that was a point of contention, and that was something we did away with. And instead, tried to ask for just substantive raises year to year. I don't disagree with you. I was given a budget each year. If I don't spend it, there is a, there is a defensible position to say that I could take that money and say, I'm going to give four or five grand to people at the end of the year because the reason we have salary savings is only because, people didn't walk in and ask for less money, it's because someone left. And if their colleagues leave, there's only one way to handle that in my business, and that is, you got to cover. Every time a lawyer leaves, we just split up their caseload among the ones who are left standing. And so every time someone leaves, everyone else has to work that much harder. So I don't disagree with you at all. I just, I don't do it, not as a matter of principle, some, something, I'm against it. It's more of a reflection of a recognition that previous county commissions did not like that practice. So I'm willing to work with this body with, again, finance, HR, et cetera, to utilize that money in an effective way that could address some of this without really affecting your bottom line, because the money's already earmarked for my office.
I would like to comment, so again, it's just one commissioner, but it's my opinion that, again, if, if the, if the situation in a given year is that you, you had a lot of openings and there's salary savings, I think that I can make the very solid argument that that money could be provided in bonuses because they had to, they had to do extra work that year. But if the FTE count was to go down and the metrics, the performance measures stays at the high level, otherwise, I don't want to disservice the people we serve.
Sure.
But if you can keep those performance measures up higher with less staff, then I can argue for a salary pay increase that would be permanent, so to speak. So I think there's two ways to look at this, and I think both of those are, I can argue for either one of them. It depends on how you approach that, that idea. So I think they're both, they both have merit.
Just got to keep, keep the bodies there. I mean, whatever our FTEs are, whether it's fewer or more, if I keep people on staff, we can attend to the work that's, that's there. If I lose people, this is not something I can say, well, we're going to put this off. We'll do this next year. That's a project we're just going to do next year. Our cases have speedy trial, we got to get to them. So I think, all things you know, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Lopez.
I just had one quick question. Is the DA's office included in the mental health wellness app? I know that.
Talking about the one the sheriff's doing, the Cordis, or Cortico?
Because we talked about expanding that potentially.
Yes. They, the sheriff has been kind enough to include us in that. I actually need to do a, I know I was up here and listened to Jeff give his presentation about how many times people had accessed it. I don't know the breakdown in terms of how many from my office were a part of that, or if that was just his office. But yes, it's been made available. We are, it has been an ongoing concern of ours to try to attend to that. One of the problems we have is finding time to set aside an afternoon for a training, to set aside an afternoon to send people to see someone, because every day, we've got dockets all day. You know, we get Columbus Day and, you know, a few working holidays, so to speak, but you're still at the courthouse. But trying to find that balance has been difficult. But yes, we are, we have been included in that.
I wanted to make sure. And also, I'm not sure if you're, if you were reached out to or not, but Suspenders for Hope, have you heard of that? It's just, it's an interesting, it's like an hour and a half, two-hour online training. You can do it anytime, so you don't have to sit down for an afternoon and kind of just discuss some of those things. I can get, I can make that connection for you, and I'd love to see at least that, you know, it's free, so offered to everyone in your area, just to.
You know, I wasn't sure 10 years ago what to think of these things, but I know at EMCU, Exploded Missing Child Unit, some of the most grueling work that law enforcement can do. They, a retired clinician from Calm Care offered his services after a particularly bad event. One of the detectives lost a son to a car wreck, and it was really impacted everybody. And they earmarked a few thousand dollars that he would do that over time. I've been paying for that for the last several years out of asset forfeiture funds. And if a bunch of hardened cops can get used to and relying on that contact with that individual, I know that it would be, that kind of an access to, to a clinician, to someone to talk to, would be beneficial for my folks as well.
And I know all of this is a topic that we need to do everything we can to pay your people right, but I, I can't imagine how hard just mentally this job must be for everybody. So keeping that in mind as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Commissioner.
Mark, also just, you know, it's been a great presentation, as we've all said. I just want to comment that I appreciate the responsibility that you did by, by giving us two, two sections and taking out the Greensboro and Johnson. I mean, sometimes we get presented, and sometimes even commissioners themselves can present skewed information to try to sell the deal. But I think this is really fair that you, that you took that out and still allowed us to see this in a.
Well, if you'd like to pay us what Greensboro's making, I won't object, but, but I figured you'd be.
Yeah, that's right. I think it's very responsible. I don't know if Sheena or if HR and finance helped you, but that's a great, great way to do it.
I'll give credit to John and Jeanette, my, my folks. They're the ones who pulled this together for me. And at 4 o'clock last night, when I said, could you pull those two out by 5:00 tonight? Is that going to keep you late? And they both did it, and so I appreciate all their work. That's my stuff.
Thank you to the, to your support group.
Yeah. Thank you all for your time, and available for questions, comments, discussion at any point. Obviously, it's something I care a great deal about. Thank you.
Absolutely. So I'll make a motion to receive and file. There's a motion in a second. Any other comments?
Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, resolution to adopt the Kansas Homeland Security Region G Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Ms. Julie, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners.
You're becoming a regular here.
I am, and it's not always for bad things. That's what's amazing.
Good to see you again.
All right, thank you. I'm here to present the Kansas Region G Hazard Mitigation Plan. We are seeking a resolution to adopt this plan, and I'm going to take a few moments to kind of explain what is in this plan and what this adoption means for the county. For just a brief timeline overview, all counties previously had developed their own individual plans through their local emergency management office, and it was proven to be time-consuming, created a lot of duplicate efforts. So the state had contracted out with a third-party vendor to do a regional plan, which is why we are talking about a regional plan versus a Sedgwick County-specific plan. This particular plan version is dated 2019. The meetings began in 2018. FEMA has, the process has already gone through where the plan was developed and it was approved by FEMA as a legitimate mitigation plan. Sedgwick County Emergency Management and all of the other counties that participated in this were then charged with getting adoptions through the local jurisdictions, adopting the plan that's in place. May ask why we're looking at this now in 2021. We began efforts to get local adoptions in 2019. 2020, we experienced some turnover, and of course, COVID, we were given a further year-long extension, and which is why we're here now in 2021. We do need to get local adoptions by the end of July is what the state is tasking us with. 11 counties participated in our plan. The 2019 plan included the counties that you see listed above. And I want to go into a little more details, but we are only asking, Sedgwick County will only be adopting the items that are Sedgwick County-specific. We are not adopting all the other counties' information that's in this plan. So why, what is a hazard mitigation and why do we have a plan? Hazard mitigation is any sustained action used to reduce or eliminate long-term risk. And I will list out some of what our risks are that are calculated in this plan here in a few, a couple of slides. A well-designed plan provides communities with realistic actions that can be taken to reduce vulnerability and exposure to identified hazards. And the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief Act requires governments to develop a hazard mitigation plan as a condition to receive certain types of disaster assistance, including funding for mitigation projects. Again, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program is to prevent or reduce future loss of life and property through cost-effective mitigation measures. We did reach out and we got some statistical figures that Sedgwick County has received nearly $770,000 from this program since 2014, which was the version prior to this 2019. This plan is reviewed every five years. Since the program inception in 1993, Sedgwick County has benefited in $31.5 million in mitigation plans and projects. FEMA estimates that for every dollar spent on mitigation, $26 is saved in future losses. And that's key, because it's hard to propose plans and projects for things that may not have happened yet. So when we're doing risk reduction on things to prevent something from happening, it's kind of sometimes hard to justify the cost. And like I said, FEMA has a calculation, for every dollar we spend on this, $26 in future funding is saved. One real-world example of where our mitigation funds have helped Sedgwick County is the Big Ditch. The Big Ditch is a huge mitigation project, if you will. In 1998, we had $4 million in flood-related damages. 2013, we were down to $70,000 compared to what other counties have experienced. So it just kind of shows you that mitigation projects work. It does save money when they're carefully executed, planned out, and invested in. Just a couple pictures. Another popular mitigation project local are the school safe rooms. USD 259, we had 90 safe rooms built, if you will, over the last 10 years. Granted, some of those were bond-funded, but several of those also came out of mitigation grant funding, and other public, private schools have done so as well. This year in 2021, FEMA had released a program, the Residential Safe Room. You may have heard the Sunflower Safe Room Program. To be eligible for that, local jurisdictions has to adopt this mitigation plan. So this is another real-world, ongoing program that we need to adopt this plan, so that way we can release funds for any qualifications for the local residential safe rooms. So what is in this hazardous plan? Definition, we talk about hazard, vulnerabilities, but there's some definitions that explains what this is. Hazard, is this a potential source for injury, death, and damage? Vulnerability is a susceptible for injury, death, and damage. Exposure is the area that the hazard could affect. And the biggest definition is risk, the chance that this hazard will cause harm. In a little bit, I'll go over some just brief calculations and how we determine where our highest risks are and where our efforts should be focused. And then risk mitigation, the reason we're here is a systematic reduction in the exposure and vulnerability to the hazard. We're not going to do a whole lot of math today, but I just want you to be aware that our, our risks are calculated. This isn't just someone's opinion thrown ideas on paper. These are mathematical calculations to help us determine what we need to focus our mitigation efforts on. We look at probability, the magnitude, warning time, and duration. All of this goes into what we call the Calculated Priority Risk Index. Probability is just the likelihood of something happening. Magnitude is if it does happen, what kind of injuries or damage would it cause? So it goes from the scale from one being least likely or negligible up to four, which is highly likely and catastrophic. Warning time, do we get 24 hours or more notice, or do we get less than six hours? And then duration, how long is the event, the hazard last? So all of this gets calculated, and I'm going to show you just a real-life example of our highest risk, which is tornado. We had the probability, and this is where it gets a little subjective, because what's the difference between a three and a four? But we look at historical data, and again, it's all calculated based on the likelihood and magnitude. So we have probability, magnitude, warning time, and duration, and it gives us a risk index of 3.6. On the next slide, you will see on the left, our highest calculated risks are tornado, floods, windstorms, winter storms, wildfire, wildfire, and hailstorm. Doesn't mean we ignore the yellow and the green, but those highest red risks are what we're really the most concerned with, and we want to make sure we're doing everything we can to protect our citizens and reduce the vulnerability to those hazards. And all of this is in the plan. It's actually calculated specifically each one, and it's talked about like what is meant by a tornado, what is a flood, what is a windstorm? All of that is provided in this mitigation plan. So I ask of you today, Sedgwick County has already partaken in this planning process back in 2018. The regional plan was accepted and approved by FEMA, but now we're looking for the local partners to, that is mentioned in the plan, that participated in it to adopt the plan as written. And this is really hard to read, and again, this is all spelled out in the plan, but this is the Sedgwick County-specific breakdown of what some of those hazards and vulnerabilities were and what their ideas are. Here's some ideas on how to do some risk mitigation.
Are you going to go through each one of those boxes?
I am not going to go through each one unless you would like me to, sir.
Thank you.
But there are some goals addressed, but this just kind of helps me develop my strategic plan too, and working with our flood managers and things too, because a lot of this is flood-related. But we can look at this as our strategic plans of how we want to do things moving forward.
Well, I do see that, yeah, you're categorized by cities in the Sedgwick Counties.
Correct, yes.
It's a little easier to, it's not quite as overwhelming as the first plan.
Yes. If you look, this plan is 711 pages. It can look very intimidating, which is why I'm just kind of focusing on what the Sedgwick County parting pieces are of this.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So my team and I, we've actually already been going out to some of the local jurisdictions, having these same kind of discussions and what their specific vulnerabilities are that are listed in the plan. We've actually just got violas yesterday, so we're getting this down, getting this adoption taken care of so we can meet the state requirement. And again, we don't want to hold up any potential grant funds for mitigation projects. So we're aggressively working on this. And we believe that we will have this taken care of by the deadline. We've also had our local school districts, Wichita State, we've had some other organizations as well participate in this. And Sedgwick County Fire District One is one of those, which I'll be presenting here at the fires meeting here shortly, too, the same thing. But we'll get their local adoption as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, so you need us to adopt this plan as a motion?
Yes, sir. Yes, there's a resolution to adopt this plan.
Okay. Any questions for Julie? I don't see any right now, so.
I will share that this plan is available on our website. It is open for public viewing so anyone can go to the Sedgwick County Emergency Management Department page on planning and see a copy of this.
So by adopting this plan, even though you're going to receive additional information, maybe from some jurisdictions, at least you're able to submit the plan based on our vote today to adopt.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to, thank you for the presentation.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to ask again, I guess, what about the pandemic like we just went through and vaccination plan? Is that part of this, is that part of this?
No, sir. This is actually just more of, that's, there's different plans for that. This is just for the mitigation portion of it. Disease outbreak was listed as a lower risk index, if you will. It's not zero. But some of that calculation is based on historical events. So I know that the outbreak will impact future assessments, but I don't think it's still going to put it higher than like floods or tornadoes. But there are other plans that supplement this mitigation plan.
Is there anything here regarding potable water supply for the community? Should that be compromised?
I don't recall seeing potable water. Mostly, it's the flood, the natural disasters and the floods, tornadoes. I'll have to look into that to see if it mentions specifically potable water. I know it wasn't listed as any of our potential mitigation projects, if you will.
I just know there are some communities that that has become a problem. And it's always a challenge, you know, logistic-wise, how do they handle that? I don't want to think about that in the middle of that event. I'd like to know what is the plan should that ever happen? Do we have a plan? So I guess, I guess I'll ask you to circle back.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the Kansas Homeland Security Region G Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Self-helpful. Thank you, sir.
There's a second. I don't see any other comments. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on June 17, 2021.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Welcome.
Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, and the meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on June 17. We have five items that we're presenting and asking your approval. Item number one is 2021 Recommended Insurance Renewals. And this recommendation is to accept the insurance premium renewals as listed. And that's an estimated total of $1,301,504.32. This item is attached to Consent Agenda G, which will deal with the transfer of funds from risk contingency to risk management to cover this increased premium cost. Item number two, First Floor Traffic Court Remodel for Project Services. The recommendation is to accept the low bid from Van Asdell Construction in the amount of $861,000. Item number three is the On-Call Support for Justware for various departments. And this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Pine Technologies LLC. And that will be for a period of three years, ending June 30 of 2024. Item number four, Prevention/Early Intervention Services, Department of Corrections. And this recommendation is to accept the proposals, execute service provider agreements with Center for Behavioral and Academic Research, DBA McAdams Academy, and Mental Health Association of South Central Kansas for the annual amounts that are listed. And that will begin July 1, 2021, and will have the options of two one-year renewals. And our final item is the Winch Truck for Public Works Fleet. Recommendation is to accept the quote from Kenworth Truck Company, Division of Pack Car Incorporated, also known as Wichita Kenworth. And this will be based on the Sourcewell Contract 060920 KTC. And that is in the amount of $119,371.14. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Very thorough, as always. Anybody have any questions? I don't see any questions. So I'll make a motion to approve the bids and contracts as presented. There's a motion in a second. Any other comments? Don't see any. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You bet. Thanks, Joe. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stills, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items E through J this morning.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about items E through J? I don't see anything. So I will make a motion to approve consent items E through J.
Second.
Motion in a second. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Chairman, no update from me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you for that legislative report. That's very thorough. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Anybody have anything to report, committee-wise? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. So I sit on the Exploration Place Board. And one thing that we are doing there is on Thursdays, they have Food Truck Thursdays, they have live music. And tomorrow, they will have, the Wichita Police Foundation is raffling a 1976 Ford Crew Cab truck. And so that will be there parked at Exploration Place. And if you want any information, you can talk to them there. You can buy your raffle ticket. That will end in September. So they will be there at the Food Truck Thursday event at the Exploration Place. And also, they are, what do they call it? It's a Blue Star Museum. Exploration Place is a Blue Star Museum. And that means that between Memorial Day and Labor Day, any military family can go for free. So if you are a part of a military family, you are welcome to come to the Exploration Place for free. Just bring your ID. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that update. I might mention also that we received an email about the, Sedgwick County needs your input on the American Rescue Plan Act. We are taking, this is the survey time, and it's very important. You know, we've been through this exercise with the CARES money. And we've all been asked off and on, well, how do I request something or make a suggestion? So I've already shared this with the Chamber and with Visit Wichita and with, and with the Great Wichita Partnership. So they have sent this out to all of their membership. And so there's a link there to complete the survey by June 30. So it is, and I think Commissioner Cruz, you did it already. It's not a difficult.
Yeah, the only change that I hope was made was that when you do it on a mobile device, you can't read all of the, you can't read all of the things that you're going to choose. You can read up to what is allowable in your browser window. So I hope that we'll be able to read exactly what you're trying to select. The other thing was, did we make the change around that, last week I asked Lindsay, I haven't checked, so I don't know if it's fixed, that these are eligible expenses for CARES funds?
Okay.
Okay. You fixed it? Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you. All right. Did you have something else?
Nope, that's all I had.
Okay, that's good.
Nope.
Okay. I don't see any, any other committee reports. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Other.
Other. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was disappointed in a quote in Wichita Eagle this morning to quote, "I can tell you right now that the Sedgwick County Zoo doesn't want people from Wichita or terrorists to go out to Tanganyika." That quote disparages the hard work of the leadership, the staff, board members, and community leaders who support the Sedgwick County Zoo. Both Tanganyika and Sedgwick County Zoo are within my district. I support both zoos. I have served on the Sedgwick County Zoo Board for the past four years, and not once have I heard anyone at the zoo making any statement that they do not want people to travel to Tanganyika. I am proud of both zoos. They do have separate mations, but most, both mations support the community, learning more about the animals that inhabit our planet. Therefore, I ask our Communications Department to contact Wichita Eagle and ask them to amend their article. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. The irony is, the same article, there was a quote that, that about Visit Wichita, that there's a, that they're funneling people toward Wichita Hotels and Wichita Venues. The commissioner that quoted, I don't know, that Visit Wichita highlights Rock River Rapids or Field Station dinosaurs in Derby or Tanganyika Park wildlife. I serve on that board at Visit Wichita. Matt Fouts at Tanganyika serves on that board. Kathy Sexton at City of Derby serves on that board. There is absolutely, the Visit Wichita promotes things all over this region. And as a matter of fact, as recently as May, Susie Santo, the Director of Visit Wichita, was here and presented us with a program that highlighted 12 attractions. I think they call it the Attractions Passport or something. And if you go get six of these attractions stamped, then you're in a drawing for a, for a big award of, and anyway, two of those attractions were the Field Station and Tanganyika Park. And they're featured, if you go to Visit Wichita's website, all of these things, even the YMCA in Andover, which is outside of Sedgwick County. The casino that's in Sumner County is featured. So that statement, and the published by the Eagle to do that is absolutely wrong. And it's insulting to Visit Wichita. I apologize to Visit Wichita. So I also asked our Communication Department to please communicate corrections on that. That is not how Sedgwick County and Visit Wichita operates. And I'm on the board, and I can say for sure of that. So thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that on Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 at 47th and Broadway in that parking lot, it used to be Kmart, now it's closed, we are going to do a Household Hazardous Waste Event. So I will be there. But anybody who has anything to bring to that, it'll be Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00. And then also tomorrow evening, there is a Pride Event that the City of Wichita is hosting from 6:00 to 9:00 in Nafsker Park. It's for all ages. There'll be live music, food trucks. Positive Directions will be offering free SDI tests. And Hunter Health will be there providing COVID vaccines.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for mentioning those events. Yesterday, I just want to share my experience with EMS. I have a newfound respect for those who are riding in these trucks, taking care of the citizens of Sedgwick County. I sat with Major Mitch Hansen and Major Tom Seifer of Post 3 yesterday. We had a great conversation. Those guys have been on EMS. They've been working for over 20 years. The dedication that they have is really admirable. Then, Major Mitch Hansen took me on a call of a gentleman who had OD'd. And I tell you, when I, when I pulled up and got out of the truck and went in this gentleman's house to see all of the first responders, Brendan McGreevy, I think that's how you say his name, he is the paramedic that was, he said he had to administer two milligrams of the drug to bring somebody back to life after they have OD'd. And normal, a normal dose is .5 milligrams. So his demeanor with the patient was, I was very impressed by how he handled the situation, the way he spoke to the individual. It was just a very eye-opening reality that these folks deal with on a daily basis. I had an opportunity to sit in the ambulance with the patient. I noticed that his birth date was very close to mine when he read it off, and so we're pretty much the exact same age. And so I sat with the, with the gentleman. And I just asked him how long he had been using meth, why he, has he ever tried to get help? I asked him even if he did know, or even if he wanted to get help, does he know where to go? And he mentioned, no. And so I wonder if we could, how we could be, how we can inform our community of where to go. I think we have a long way to go with reducing the stigma of substance abuse. It traps people, and they don't really know how to get out. But when they do want to get out, do they know where to go? So that was pretty eye-opening. And then we pulled up to another call that was a gentleman who wrecked his motorcycle and hit the back of his head pretty good. And he was at a big, big bump on his head. And they, Amanda Morland and Chris Banks, I was able to ride to the hospital in the back of the ambulance. And I tell you, Chris Banks, the demeanor that he had with the patient was, he was just very real and comforting. They talked about, the patient was talking about, are they going to cut my jeans? And Chris was like, let me just tell you, when you get to the hospital, they're going to, and it was just a repeated conversation about what was going to happen at the hospital. But it was so real and so raw. And the way he handled this crisis that this gentleman was in was very impressive. And then when we got to the hospital, the trauma team there, it was overwhelming to see how many people they had in the trauma area. So I have to say that seeing what they do in just a very, very short amount of time, I spent four hours. So that was, I want to recognize that I understand that was not a very long amount of time to really get a full grasp of what they do. And I'm thankful I didn't see anything that was too overtly tragic. But I just have a newfound respect for those first responders. And the collaboration and the coordination that these departments, you could just see how well they worked together from fire to police to EMS was pretty impressive. And I have to say, these people deserve to be paid more for what they do. They absolutely deserve to be paid more for what they do. And I hope that we can find the money in our budget to do that because it's, it really shocks me how much money they make for how many lives that they save. So thank you for allowing me to make these comments. I would encourage other Commissioners, if you have the time in your schedule to ride with these professionals, I would encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a number of things I'd like to share. First of all, let's talk about comments of Commissioner Dennis and the chairman. I'd like to say, I don't think the Wichita Eagle needs to do anything because that was a quote. They called me and asked me some questions about this, and I shared my heart. I'm not an expert on Visit Wichita. And I can tell you, my perspective goes all the way back to when I first became a commissioner. We had a lot of controversy in 2015 and 2016 regarding funding for the zoo and the AZA and elephants and all kinds of things going way back. And so maybe I, maybe unfairly developed a bit of an opinion, but you know, I see there's this competition between different organizations, and perhaps that's not fair. But you know, when I look at, and I mentioned, you know, I mentioned yesterday, I'd like to see the Aviation Museum essentially connected to the, to the dock hangar, for example. They should reference each other. That's just, again, that's embracing someone else's venue and encouraging people to see there's other things out there that are similar to what you're showing interest in. But you know, whether those, whether those comments are ever made, or whether there's evidence of embracing someone else's venue, I guess I just don't know that. But it does seem that I have, I have maybe unfairly developed, if you will, a perspective that says there's competition between these different organizations. And maybe that's not fair. But nevertheless, it was just a comment. It wasn't intended to be angry or critical or disparaging or anything to these organizations. Of course, I love our Sedgwick County Zoo, and I love Tanganyika. I have memberships to both. And I take my grandkids, or my family takes our grandkids, to both of these places. I think they both have different things to offer, and they're both wonderful. And I hope that when people visit Wichita, that they know about both of them. And hopefully, they, if they're here to see animals, they would, they would have a chance to see both of these. It doesn't mean that either one of them is wrong or bad or, or anything. You know, with respect to Visit Wichita, again, maybe, maybe I'm incorrect, but I guess I understood that this was funded through bed tax by people who visit within the City of Wichita. And again, maybe I just don't understand it because I've not spent a lot of time at the Visit Wichita organization. I'm not on their board. And unfortunately, the briefing we had yesterday didn't really discuss these details. So let me just say, if there's a, if there's a deeper understanding exactly how this is going to be done, and this has all been determined, I guess it would have been nice for that to be part of our presentation yesterday. So again, I'll just say, I guess I did not, I did not understand the details as you two understand it. So again, it was just my opinion. It wasn't intended to be. It wasn't intended to be a statement of fact. It was simply saying, these are my concerns. But again, the end of my quote was really this. I think that everyone in this community should embrace other places, not just yourself. If they're already doing that, then fantastic. But to the extent there's other things out there, if there's any sense of competition, please understand, we would do better as a community if we can highlight all of the strengths of the community, even things that are not part of the thing we're personally involved in. And that was the point of the quote. So please don't miss that point. If we're already there, fantastic. Second of all, I'd like to talk about EMS just a little bit. I also did spend some time on our EMS, within the EMS organization. I'll just say this, during the year of COVID, I spent, I should say, I tried three times to ride along, and unfortunately, there was reasons why that did not work out. A couple of weeks ago, I simply took a different tack. I said I was going to ride on them, and I don't know that they liked it necessarily, but they did accommodate me, and I appreciate that very much. I spent over two days, about two and a half weeks apart, I spent about 20 hours on these ambulances, mostly in the APP and the supervisor trucks, but I also did get to do some experiences in the ambulances, going on calls as well. So I got to see, I see a cross-section of what Sedgwick County provides, and there's a lot of things I could talk about, what I experienced. The first thing I would like to say is that these are extreme professionals. They're very, very good at what they do. In fact, some of the people, I've seen them in different roles, and I would've said, it's almost like it's a different personality. When they're in that mode, they are like a machine. I use the example, it's almost like a math equation. They're following exact processes and procedures. They know exactly what to do. They're interfacing as a team member, and they're talking like a different language between the two of them, or more of them. And at the same time, they're providing empathy and very, very good patient care, helping that patient understand they're getting the best care they possibly can. And so really, it was a phenomenal experience. And I know we can't record these things because of HIPAA, but I wish the public could see what I saw. So I don't know if there's a way to ever do that, but it would be wonderful for the public to see the details of how these calls actually play out in real life, because it's not what you think. When you see it on TV, or you see it other places where people, they have these ideas of what EMS does, and I'll just tell you, my mind has been opened. It's not like that at all. I was extremely impressed, and I appreciate what they did. And so I could go on. I did come away with, I think, five or six different takeaways, things I think that we can address that are not just organization. I'm not talking about organization or leadership. Those are issues we can talk about another time. But these are things within the organization, or maybe not even cost issues. They're simply policy things, there's workplace issues, there's vehicle issues, and there's a number of things like that I think that could be addressed, that I did bring away those items, and I've communicated with our manager a little bit about some of those things already. I'm not done doing that. I'll continue to have those conversations. I would say the one thing that these folks do, again, I agree with Commissioner Cruz, they do deserve more money, but that money isn't going to solve all of the problems. What they really deserve is respect. And I think if you were to ask many of them, they would tell you, they've not had respect, which is why we have a very, very high attrition rate within the EMS organization, to the point that I think the community has more risk than they should. And how do I know that? Because our response times are not what they used to be, and our status advisory numbers are alarming. And I think that the community needs to know that the system right now is not just attrition because of COVID or because of pay, or because of other things like that. There's issues that I think that we, as leaders, need to know what those issues are. I think that the evidence is coming together very nicely, and hopefully soon we can have a different conversation about how to fix this issue going forward. Anyway, I can talk about this all day long, but I'm sure you don't want me to do that. The final thing, I'll say this, is that we, I do have a coffee scheduled for Friday this week, between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. at the 1636 East Patriot Avenue in Derby. If you didn't hear that, please contact me. I'd be glad to tell you all about that. But it's just, I use the word ad hoc. It means you can come and go whenever you want, and the people control the conversation. I will be glad to answer questions or provide briefings or information about anything that you would like to talk about, or if no one raises a question, I'll simply fill in information that I have regarding the county. So with that, it's a 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., come and go as you like. I provide coffee for free, anybody that wants to come to that. It's at 1636 East Patriot Avenue in Derby, and I hope to see you there. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. I forgot to mention one thing. So Monday, I spent a couple of hours at 911, and I sat with a very highly skilled woman named Mallory. She's been on at 911 for, I think, about nine years. And so when I sat with her, she is taking a call in one ear, and she's dispatching in the other. And it's, I mean, it literally is the most multitasking I've ever seen in my life. And as a mom, I think I'm a good multitasker, but I don't even hold a candle to these folks. So one thing, I'm really kind of curious, and I'm glad that I was able to sit at 911 and then go to EMS the next day, because deploying of units, from my understanding, used to be, EMS used to deploy their own units. They used to handle where they needed to fill, they would make sure that there was coverage. But I guess that that was kind of taken from them and given to 911, and I'd like to know the reason why. Because just, now again, I only sat with 911 for two hours, I was with EMS for four, so I have a very miniscule knowledge of this. But when I was sitting there, it seemed like, I don't understand why EMS isn't deploying their own units. And so I'd like to understand that a little bit further, just because I did have just a short amount of time. Because when it comes down to it, you have 911 doing a ton of things, and I wonder how we could better utilize our resources if EMS was doing that for a very long time. What was the reason for the change? I'd like to know that.
We'll get your report out on that, Commissioner.
Okay. You know, why the decision was made, who made the decision, how long it was made, like where's the data and research around why it was changed from one department to the other? That's really what I want to know. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. That was actually one of the six things I brought back, and I've already sent some email to the manager regarding that. I think there's been some discussions regarding this between he and I that may be relevant. But I would just say this, my knowledge is, it wasn't that long ago that this was changed. The dispatchers were glad to take this responsibility on, but just as an observation, again, I agree with Commissioner Cruz, they are very busy in 911 and dispatch. And again, I know they do a tremendous job. It's really a very difficult thing when you add all the various things they have to pay attention to. And so to be aware of where the available resources are in the county and then make those moves is something that, I guess, some dispatchers are more focused on that than others. No offense to any of them, but I just think they're very busy. But the commanders used to do that, and it wasn't that long ago that that was the case. And so I think this is something that's changed recently. But I will just tell you, numerous times during the day, when I was in the commander vehicle, I noticed that there was, for example, there are Status Advisory 3. These are three ambulances in the county available for the next call, and all three of them were in the same quadrant of the county. In other words, three quarters of the county didn't have a resource, but one quadrant had three. And I said, why, you know, I'm not the smartest person on these things, obviously, but why don't we move some of these ambulances around? They said, they would have done that before, but they're not allowed to do that now, because this is now a dispatch function. So again, they were a bit frustrated as well, but I do think that that ties into longer response times if we don't stage those ambulances based on what's available and looking at the geographic part of the county, trying to disperse those things evenly around the county, waiting for the next call. So it certainly is a very important issue, and I do think that the manager's already essentially working on that, I believe, with the EMS leadership, trying to find out what the right answer is to this. But I did raise that as one of my six things. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I made a statement earlier, and I was honestly just going to let it lie after making that statement. But after listening to Commissioner Howell's comments, that he does not want us to ask our communications department to contact the Eagle, and let them know that we do not condone a statement that says, "I can tell you right now that Sedgwick County Zoo doesn't want people from Wichita or terrorists to go out to Tanganyika," is completely false. So as I said, I was going to let it go at that, but he's not taking responsibility for that statement, which is very plain to me. So I make a motion, then, that we ask our communications department to contact the Eagle and ask them to amend the article.
I'll second that. Patricia, do we have to make a motion to do an off-agenda item?
Wouldn't be a bad idea.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we do an off-agenda item. There's a motion, a second, for an off-agenda item. Commissioner Howell.
I'll wait till after the vote, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
I don't know how I'm supposed to vote here. This isn't my...
This is an off-agenda item.
Oh, yes, okay. Yes, aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Off-agenda item. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we ask our communications department to contact the Wichita Eagle and ask them to amend their article.
I'll second that. Commissioner Lopez.
I just have a question. What do you mean by that? Are you going to have, do you want them to reach out to the zoo board and have them put a statement saying they don't agree? Or I guess I just don't understand what you're wanting exactly.
Certainly. There's two quotes that are self-admitted regarding Visit Wichita that Commissioner Howell says, maybe I don't know, or I can't articulate exactly what he said, maybe I need to know more information, things like that. He didn't say that. He made broad assumptions on Visit Wichita and on the zoo. And it's, I mean, you can see the article.
I read it. I just wasn't sure when we were voting on this.
So we just want to clarify that those, from a board position, we did not agree with both of those statements. So Commissioner Dennis?
I know that he was speaking as an individual commissioner, and we are all able to speak as individual commissioners. However, what he did was he disparaged the hard work of our leadership at the Sedgwick County Zoo, and a fantastic board at the Sedgwick County Zoo, the staff there, and this commission that oversees that zoo. So that's where I'm speaking from, is just the zoo. Commissioner Meitzner is speaking from Visit Wichita. So I think that we, as a board, need to clarify that that is one commissioner's opinion, and it is certainly not the position of the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners.
And I would add that, from the Visit Wichita, Susie Santo was here just last month and presented an update on that and talked about this card. So it's an uninformed statement that feeds a divisiveness in the community about the Visit Wichita staff and board, the zoo staff and board, and it's something that I don't, I think it's incorrect and needs to be corrected. Commissioner Cruz.
I wonder if we, so let me understand this correctly. We are, the motion was to contact the Eagle to do what exactly?
To amend the article where they had statements against both the Sedgwick County Zoo and Visit Wichita.
So could I suggest, maybe we make us, I'd like to make a substitute motion, that we write a letter to the editor clarifying the position of how the zoo board and Visit Wichita operate within our county, and how we support both of those organizations.
I'm fine with that. I'll second the substitute motion.
Okay. There's a substitute motion and a second. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Chairman. Just to be absolutely crystal clear, I think that I clarified, this was a personal comment. The Eagle did their job. They quoted me accurately. There's nothing to correct, other than you don't like the content of what I said. And I've already admitted that I was wrong in what I said and how I said it. I came from a position of not knowing more information about things I was being asked about. So I apologize to the zoo. Again, let me be very clear, I love our Sedgwick County Zoo. I love the Sedgwick County Zoo Board. They do a tremendous job. I love Tanganyika. I think they're both very good organizations, and I have highest respect for both of them. And again, it sounds to me like, based on comments here today, that the Sedgwick County Zoo is very glad to send people to Tanganyika. That's wonderful to hear, and I'm glad that's true. And so I would agree with Commissioner Cruz. I think we should clarify that as a board, and I would be glad to put my name on that as well. But the Eagle doesn't have anything to correct, because they did their job. They quoted me correctly. So if we want to clarify that the Sedgwick County Commission understands that these organizations, Visit Wichita and Sedgwick County Zoo, do exactly the opposite of what I contended in my quote that was wrong, I think that's great to clarify that. So, but again, asking the Eagle to correct an article that's already in print doesn't really make sense. I think to clarify a better position with a different article or a different statement would make a lot of sense. So I think Commissioner Cruz is correct. Thank you.
Okay. There's a motion and a substitute motion and a second. I don't see other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries, so we'll get with you, Akeem. And you probably need to watch some of the comments today from the show, or from the meeting, to try to incorporate that into an editorial statement. Okay. Any other business before the commission? I don't see any, so we don't have, we do not have executive session today, or do we? No, we do not. So we do have a fire agenda, so we will, do I adjourn this one?
Recede.
Recede, okay. Thanks for the right words. We will recess the county commission meeting, and we'll call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
We didn't have any, we do not have anybody that wants to speak on public agenda. I don't see anybody in the audience that wants to speak, so we will close the public agenda. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, fire meeting minutes of May 19, 2021.
Commissioners, you've had a copy of the minutes to review. Is there any corrections, additions, or comments? Being done, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the fire meeting on May 19.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. No other comments. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Commissioners, good morning. Tom Stolz, again, County Manager's Office. Recommend approval of consent item B on the fire agenda.
Okay, there's consent item B. I think we've been briefed on this earlier. And any other comments? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion that we approve consent item B.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. So we will adjourn the governing body of Fire District Number One and return from recess to the Sedgwick County Board of Commissioners, or any other comments? Okay, I don't think, we do not have a meeting next week, and 4th of July will come and go. Do we meet before the 4th of July?
We will not.
We will not.
Next meeting is July.
So everybody, please have a safe and a happy 4th of July holiday, and celebrate our American heritage, and be safe. So thank you, everybody, for watching, and we'll see you in the first parts of July. Thank you. We're adjourned.